It's a little late, they are.
We have standards. It's not gonna work for it, get out. I'm still gonna steal you someday.
Oh, nice. I think that's beautiful.
I brought little pics to put in.
I saw me is there, right?
Who?
Sonia.
Sonia. Who? Sonia.
Yeah, you know.
Not Tanya?
No, no, the world.
I confuse with Tanya and Sonia. What are we waiting on? Just Sonia? Oh, there she is.
Let's go. Ready? Welcome. It's three o'clock on the twenty-fifth day of March two thousand and twenty-five. This is the meeting of the Board of UNA County Commission for today. If you have electronic devices, please turn them on. Be quiet or turn them off. Every time I say that, mine always rings during the thing, sorry. Okay, if you haven't, make sure you sign in before you leave. We have a pretty full calendar today to go through, so let's get started. We have a pledge of, uh, Pledge of Allegiance by Lana Fulbright, and Wendy Long will be presenting the prayer first.
I'm your father, coming. We're thankful for the many blessings that God has given us. And we're thankful for this spiritual day. We're thankful that we could be at attendance in this meeting today. May our side spirit be upon the leaders, that they will make wise choices for our community and for the citizens of the Carrington County. We're thankful for the armed services and for those that are serving our country. May I say, oh bless them, their families at this time. Let me say this in the name of Jesus Christ, yeah.
Amen.
Thank you.
There she is.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, ladies. All right. Approval minutes for March eleventh, special meeting, March eleventh, twenty twenty-five meeting, March twelfth, twenty twenty-five work session, and March nineteenth work session. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes, uh, from the March eleventh special work session.
You mean all of them I just said?
What's up?
All of them I just said?
Oh, all of them.
Okay. There's four of them in there, not just one.
Okay, March eleventh and March twelfth and March nineteenth. I'm sorry.
You're all right.
Thank you.
You were early, so it's okay. You have a second? I mean, I vote?
Aye.
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 Okay, Caleb? Approval warrants?
Can you hear me? Yep. All right. Well, good afternoon. Um, Caleb Hall from the Clerk Otter's office. So I've got two e- is this ties? Okay, so I've got the warrant register from the thirteenth, um, in the mail. So we got the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand and eighty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. And just a couple of highlights. So two contract payments we had to reissue. They were nine thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars each, so two of those. Just some annual maintenance on the ESNS election equipment. This is reimbursed from the state, but it's eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety-five. And we had dental claims, medical claims, um, just general M and O and utilities. So I don't know if you had questions on?
Okay, on the reissues, that's just reissuing the check?
Right.
Okay.
We had to void those two and reissue them. So they were on the last check run before that.
Technically, they're out of our budget already.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, um, call for a motion?
Oh, wait, he has another one? I thought you said for two.
I do have another one, so.
Another one, what?
Uh, warrant register.
Three twenty.
Go for it.
Okay.
Sorry.
From the twentieth, um, in the amount of five hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. The majority of this was, uh, US Bank for about, it was ninety-eight thousand. Contract payments was about seventy-two thousand. We had payroll in there as well. Had a burial of reclamation. A lot of this was for the road department for gravel. So sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine for that. Again, these are just highlights. Um, Elwood Staffing for the Western Park was five thousand and fifteen. ICM Solutions, this was for gravel crushing, uh, fifteen thousand and twenty-one dollars. I got the I-Work subscription for, I think, community development. Four thousand five hundred, fourteen thousand five hundred. Motorola for the sheriff, sixteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-one, and Summit Foods, twelve thousand, one hundred and one. So just some of the highlights. And then we had the dental and the medical that usually come out weekly now. All right, and?
Anything else before I step on your toes?
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, call for a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the warrants as presented.
Any discussion? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any tax matters?
Nope.
I see a bunch of heads shaking, no. So we're good there. Tri-County Health Annual Report. Kirk?
Thanks. I think I've got it here on this, uh, projector to share. Yeah, I think I have to log in here.
We want to watch you log in, see how many times it took you.
I think it looks like I got it. One try.
My loving old niece.
Nice horse.
Yeah, I don't know how to, how to change that. Ty, you'll have to help me. Well, what I'm seeing is not that. I'm seeing my, what I want to present, so. Oh, there you go. I just had to end it and start it. Anyway, I'm Kirk Bench, the Director of Tri-County Health Department. I appreciate your time today. Quickly, we'll, we'll share our annual report. I also have Darren Brown, our Deputy Director, with me, and Sydney Lamb, our PIO. In the event of emergency, Sydney is the one that you, you two should stand up so they know who you are. In the event of an emergency, Sydney would be our main point of contact on coordinating outreach to the community, et cetera. So just so you guys know, if you get communications from any of the three of us, that's relevant. We are the health department that serves the three counties, Daggett, Duchene, and Uinta, and, uh, were created through an inter-local agreement with those three counties. And part of state law and part of that inter-local agreement requests that annually we report to the counties on our finances. And I apologize, I just noticed that this, um, chart doesn't quite make sense. Half of it just says total, and the other half shows the percentages. So just imagine that the right half of that is, is the total. The numbers are all correct and the proportions are correct, if you ignore that fifty percent, um, on the left. But, uh, the biggest chunk, um, in two thousand and twenty-four of our revenue, um, was federal grants. And those are mostly passed through from the Utah Department of Health and Human Services, um, as federal monies to us. There is a portion that comes from, um, DEQ as well and some other agencies, but primarily that's, um, DHHS funding. And, and that makes, in two thousand and twenty-four, that made up about two million dollars of our revenue. And then the next biggest chunk is the charges for services. So when we, um, issue a permit for a wastewater system, when we permit a restaurant and inspect that restaurant, or when we vaccinate, um, someone or provide immunizations to children, typically there's a payment associated with that. So they may pay a fee in some of those cases, or they may pay a copay when it relates to immunizations. And that, that makes up about a million dollars in our revenue, just shy of a million dollars. And then the other portions of our revenue are the county tax contributions and state monies, which are pretty proportional there, both at a little over, um, eight hundred thousand dollars. And then we earn a little bit in interest, and we have some miscellaneous revenue there that is fairly minor. But that's sort of a snapshot of where our revenues come from. Looking at where we spend our money, as you might guess, the bulk of that is on our human resources, on our human capital. So the big number there is about three and a half million dollars on salaries and wages. We also spend a sizable chunk on buildings, grounds, utilities, and medical supplies and vaccines. And then below that, travel between the three counties and, uh, capital expenditures, et cetera, office expenses. So that's kind of a brief sort of overview of where our funding comes from and what we do with it. As you know, our primary duty is to protect the health of the community, promote health, please.
All the sirens and stuff, it's the oilers coming through. There's not a major catastrophe.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead. Thank Kirk.
I thought that it, well, they were coming for me. I thought I'd done something wrong.
It would take a squad with a padded van, yes.
As we look at the current state of federal funding, um, which is a big chunk of what we rely on to administer, um, the services that we provide, we anticipate significant changes. And so, you know, looking at our employees over time, in two thousand and twenty, prior to two thousand and twenty, we had between forty and forty-five employees. We bumped up about ten employees during COVID response. And we've continued to not rehire those positions as we've seen people leave. Hey, I might.
Did you say something?
I, I know how exciting these numbers are, and I don't want anybody to be distracted by anything else. This is exciting stuff to me. But, uh, anyway, I will say that we are actually at a lower level of staffing now than we were pre-COVID as we prepare for potential changes in federal funding. And in fact, I just received word about an hour ago that CDC is gonna pull back all existing COVID contracts. I have a call to learn more about that after this meeting. I anticipate that that will result in about, we were probably going to turn back about two million dollars that we weren't planning to spend anyway, but this probably would result in about another million dollars in our cuts. I don't know if that will have an impact this fiscal year or when that will go into effect, so I'm, I'm waiting to learn more. But we could be looking at needing to shrink our workforce, um, this year, which is sooner than we had been planning. But that's new today. If I'd have given this presentation yesterday, I would have said we feel really stable about where we're at right now. Not so much in the last hour. But just maybe to cover some, some quick highlights of some of the valuable services that our staff have performed. We served over three thousand five hundred WIC clients, um, in two thousand and twenty-four. Now, that was a thirty-three percent increase over two thousand and twenty-three. And I don't know necessarily what drives that. Part of that might be more pregnant women or women with young children. That might also represent that more people feel like they need additional, um, help. But the main purpose of that program is to ensure that infants and children get appropriate nutrition to start life. We find that about, um, many studies have been, looked at that and found that about every dollar we spend on infant nutrition saves three dollars in Medicaid spending down the road. So I view that very much as a, an investment in our community, making sure that children grow up healthy. We were very involved in emergency preparedness. Our health promotion team encouraged people to log their steps and take extra steps. And, and we're aware of an additional one point six million extra steps that people reported back to us, which I think is fantastic. And we inspected over five hundred entities. That includes restaurants, food trucks, uh, septic tank inspections, uh, and, um, water sources. So looking forward, we continue to work to address, um, unintentional injuries. These are some of the main areas of concern that we have is, um, one of the, some of the primary causes of death in our three counties, particularly for people of working age or in youth, are unintentional injuries that might include accidental poisonings or accidental drugged overdoses. That might include car accidents and ATV accidents, or drownings, or suffocations, things along of that nature. We had the, um, highest rate of suicide of any health department if you look at two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-three. And that is of significant concern to us. Um, and we continue to offer, um, trainings and opportunities. We offer a question persuade refer training for businesses to help interact with someone that you think might be in a bad mental state or if you think someone might be in a position where they harm themselves. We offer Narcan training and syringe exchange services to try to address some of the drug overdose. In two thousand and twenty-two, we had the highest rate of drug overdose of any health department in Utah as well. And so those two things are very concerning to us. We remain in the top two or three in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. And we have the highest rate of teen pregnancy. And along with that, we actually have the highest rate of women who smoke during pregnancy, which we directly correlate with stillbirths and preterm births and birth defects. And so those are all things that are high on our list to continue to work to address, to raise awareness of. But all of these things, we need help of community members to address because these are issues where, um, our culture sometimes either encourages these things, views these things as normal, or is accepting of some of the factors that contribute to these things in ways that we probably all need to work towards addressing. So that's where we're focusing right now. That's what our, um, community, what's the word I want, needs assessment focused on what we identified as being some of our top priorities. And that's what our current health improvement plan is focused on for the next couple of years. But mostly, I'm here to answer any questions you guys have for me and to make sure that you guys feel comfortable reaching out to us anytime with any questions, concerns, or issues that you guys face.
No, I appreciate the report. Some of those statistics are not where we want to be. I mean, you know, that's kind of sad that we're leading that. And I know in conversation, along with that, our childhood immunizations, vaccinations are, are right up at the, the top of very poor.
Yeah.
If that's a bottom very poor.
Yeah, that's also an area that we are, um, was identified kind of after our needs assessment, just sort of this year as we looked at incoming kindergarten numbers. We saw that we continue to see declines in childhood immunizations, which is a significant concern to us, given outbreaks of measles in, in various parts of the country right now and other childhood diseases, which are not, um, fun or non-consequential diseases. They have serious impacts. And we continue to encourage every parent everywhere to, um, if they immunize and vaccinate their children, we applaud them. If there are questions about that, we're happy to answer them. I continue to say I vaccinate my children. I hi- and I have access to as much data as any, as any person does on both the pros and cons of vaccines. And I would not hesitate to vacci- vaccinate my children for every childhood disease over again today, if given the opportunity. And I encourage all to re- to consider that, yes.
And with that, what you just said and the ones you listed off, I'm measles, MMR, whatever that is, is those aren't new vaccines. Those have been proven over time. They're not like some of the new vaccines that may or may not have been tested.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, those are COVID, uh, the MMR vaccines have been around for a long time. And in fact, we reformulated them in the early two thousands because there were concerns that there could be risks with one of the ingredients in some vaccines. They used a, a, a soap-like derivative called Thimer sol that helped keep the vaccine components in solution and available biologically to your body. And that Thimer sol has a minuscule amount of mercury in it. And there were concerns that any amount of mercury was, could potentially cause some issues in some individuals. And that was removed in the early two thousands. So we do have actually a fairly new MMR vaccine today that was, has been thoroughly tested all through the mid-two thousands. But yeah, there, we've, there have been more recent vaccines that have a lot of, um, I guess, media concern, a lot of hype around it, a lot of concern. But again, I, I got fully vaccinated for COVID nineteen. I have no concerns about the, um, safety effects or efficacy. That virus, it clearly saved millions of lives, um, during the first and second wave of COVID. And the subsequent waves, it hasn't been as important, but it still continues to save lives.
Thank you, Kirk. I appreciate your report.
Yeah, thank you. Happy to answer any other questions if there are any.
Okay, I'll catch you on the side.
All right.
I don't want to embarrass you.
I believe you. Anyway, that's it for annual report. Please reach out anytime you have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Very informative.
Scott Hardman, huh? Scott Hardman, uh, County Road Department. I just have the, uh, annual backhoe rental agreement as presented in the work session last week. Fourteen thousand dollars a year for a four-thirty cap backhoe.
It's used where?
The road department.
Throughout the county, not the Buckskin Hills one?
No, Buckskin Hills has its own.
Okay, any questions?
Nope.
A motion?
Believe they need it. I'll make a motion that we approve the backhoe rental agreement as presented by Scott Hardman.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
There she is. Couldn't find her. Hi, Karen. Karen?
Yes.
After you, I think we're gonna bounce down and do, uh, fourteen, the special recognition.
Okay.
I see we got some youngsters here, and I know they'll be bored sitting here all afternoon listening to us. As well as the people that brought them.
Um, I would like to propose that, uh, the commission approve the library overdrive memo- memorandum of agreement with the Department of Heritage and Arts ratification as presented in the work session last week.
Okay. Have a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the Western Heritage, whoops, the Library Overdrive Memorandum of Agreement with the Department of Heritage and Arts Ratification. Oh, wow. U S L twenty-five dash zero zero eight three.
Any comments, questions? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Brenda? Got him headed? Maybe, maybe.
We'll just talk for a minute. Since we have new faces, have you signed up for Property Watch on UNA County Recorder's website to help with your prevent fraud on your property? I suggest you do so. How's that plug?
It's free.
It is free.
Does it work, Joan?
Very much so.
Joan was a, uh, almost a victim.
Almost a victim. But yeah, he did it himself. Anytime something's recorded against your property, you get an email about it once you've signed up, so then you know. Just a little heads up, my office is on their way up. They don't know what's going on. So last week, we received a card in the mail, and I will read that as soon as they get here.
How many documents do you go through down there a year, do you think?
Every year's different. This year, we've only recorded close to two thousand documents. But a lot of those documents have been over a thousand pages per document. And we've recorded over fifteen thousand documents, or pages this year so far. So, and that's in two thousand documents. So we are above what we normally are. Brenda, would you?
Front row right there.
Front row, heck, you can stand right here.
Save for you.
What recording and telling.
Yeah, right here.
Now, just stand right in front of us.
Right here.
Get up here and stand in front of us. And face the audience. We know who you are, but they don't.
You're all in the hot seat. You can thank John, no.
Guilty as charged.
Okay. On the end, we have Sherri Bolton, uh, Deputy Recorder. We have Dana Brown, Deputy Recorder, Tanya Wilson, who is the Chief Deputy. And we have Becky Isar, who is a Deputy Recorder. And, oh my goodness, this one keeps me on my toes. We have Amelia Jensen, Deputy Recorder, and Monica Hill, Deputy Recorder. The office, our office records documents pertaining to property, anything pertaining to property. Not only property, we also do DD two-fourteens, which is military discharge. Those are free. Anything military is always free and kept private in our office. We also do anything with water, um, federal tax liens, anything like that. So if you have questions about property, our office is where you want to be. So Friday, I received this, uh, card in the mail. It says, Dear Brenda McDonald, I hope this note finds you well. Though I live out of state, I frequent- frequently rely on UNA County's online records. And I wanted to take a moment and express my sincere appreciation for the excellent work. work you and your team do. It's clear that a great deal of effort goes into maintaining such accessible, well-organized, and reliable system. Having worked with records all over the country, I can confidently say that UNA County stands out for its ease of use and accuracy. A testament for the dedication and professionalism of your office. Your team's work makes a real difference for those of us that depend on records from afar. And I am truly grateful for the work that you do. If there is ever an opportunity to support or advocate for your efforts, I would be glad to help however I can. Warm regards, Spencer Ross, Senior Landman, Arch Energy Partners. I just wanted, the public, you know, we get a lot of bad rap sometimes as the county. I want the public to realize we work hard for this county, to serve our county, and to do our very best. And this team and my office is amazing. They all go above and beyond. And I just wanted to say thank you. Turn around, girls.
Turn around so we can get your picture over there. Thank you, ladies. Very proud of you and appreciate your hard work.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Western Heritage. You're on, Lana.
Lana Fulbright, UNA County Heritage Museum. I'm here to present a grant we have received from the Department of Cultural and Community Engagement Agency through the Division of Arts and Museums from the state. We're excited. We've been awarded 1,1650 grant. It's a general support grant, operation support grant. And we are so grateful that we have this for this year because who knows if next year we'll have any grants available at all. So we are excited. We are grateful to the representatives and the legislation for working hard to keep these grants going for us. So I'm just here to do a ratification of that grant. I already signed for it. We already have 10,000 in the budget that we budgeted in. We had no idea how much the grant would be. And so we got 11,650.
Great.
So this goes into helping a lot with staff and expenses at the museum. So I just needed to bring that to you guys today. That's all I have to say.
Which means if you haven't been down there and looked at the museum, you need to. It's very, very interesting.
We're always changing, always doing new exhibits, always trying to keep, tell more stories of our wonderful county. So thank you for having me.
Call for a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the Western Heritage Museum grant for general operating support in the amount of 11,650 as presented.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Lana. Matt, you get the big one.
All right, Matt Kazer with Community Development. I've got here the, our general plan, Water Element Grant Contract with the Division of Water Resources through the state of Utah. This is to help us cover the cost of updating our general plan with a water element. We've seen in the last couple of years that water is important and the state's mandated that we add this to our general plan. The amount of the grant is $10,000. We have contracted with Horox Engineering to put this plan together for us. Their cost is $10,800. $800 will come out of the community development budget. There are signatures on this for the commission chair and myself. And so otherwise, it's the same as what was presented at the work session last week.
Okay, any questions, comments?
I would just say that, you know, this is, the other entities around the valley that's done these water analysis has been very favorable. And it's, you know, it's such a big topic that it simply needs to be done. So I think it's a good, it's a good deal.
Okay, call for a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the General Plan Water Element Grant Contract with the Division of Water Resources, which will update our county's general plan with the Water Resources element. And the amount of the grant is $10,000. Total project, 10,800 with 800 coming from the community development budget.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Matt. You get the next one.
Okay, I have here an executive order for the Ashley Gorge Property Rules and Regulations. These were, these were presented at the work session Wednesday, the 12th, I guess, of March. So two weeks, about two weeks ago, there was quite a bit of discussion there at the meeting. I don't know that the discussion was really about the rules themselves, but more the use of the property. So other than that, other than putting it in the executive order format, it's the same as what was presented at that meeting. So I guess there was one, one word change. Jensen Water had suggested that we change one word from approved to permitted in item L. It now reads, "Any installation or construction of any kind must be permitted by the Board of County Commissioners prior to any work being done before permitted was approved." Their synonyms mean the same thing. So there wasn't a concern with making that change.
Okay, call for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve, where am I at? The Ashley Gorge Property Rules and Regulations for, for the general public use as presented by Matt Kazer.
Any questions, comments?
So just to, just to make sure we're all on the same page. From what I understand, this is rules for just when you find yourself there, whether you come in from the bottom, you come in from the top, you fall off the ledge into the sides, you parachute in. This is the behavior that we expect, and it's not related to any other activities. Is that correct?
Correct. And it's just for the general public. The water districts that are up there that have easements, they have, within their easements, they're able to do the work that the easement grants them. And so it doesn't regulate their work up there. Now, if one of their employees is up there on their own and not working for the district, then these rules would apply, obviously, to them as not up there for work. So, but yeah, that's all, what you said is correct.
Yeah, and I, I think it's, there's a lot of eyes on that area and we've probably got, gonna have more visitors than normal. So I think it's a good thing that we got something in place to, a standard to judge by, so.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right, sir, thank you. Lauren?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Lauren Anderson with the County Attorney's Office. I have to present to you an amended Title V for the Red Wash Highway. We actually have a Title V to that. We received that from the BLM a while ago. But this is an amended Title V because there will be work that needs to be done on the Red Wash Highway. We need to move the highway away from the river. And there's also going to be, they're going to elevate it a little bit and widen it so that it is, it is wider. The BLM did send this to the commission for signature. This basically says it's perpetual. It is our right-of-way, but we need to use that. And there's some special rules, such as we better not be dumping pollutants into the river. We need to be careful of migrating raptors, yellow-billed cuckoo if we do work during their nesting season, just some specific things like that. But I would, I would present to the, I do have two copies of it, one for us and one for the BLM. And I would present it to you that you do sign this and approve it.
Do you mind if we get a copy for the Transportation District since they will be doing work on that road?
Right, I think that, right, we'll have to do that as we will. Well, I believe we'll turn that over to them for a while until they do that, what road work, and then they'll return it to us, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, call for a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the BLM right-of-way amendment, UTU-69125-65, which is the Red Wash Highway.
Correct.
As presented.
Comments, questions? Okay, this is actually phase three of that road. It's been five or six years in the making. So it's been sorely needed. If you've never been on it, that's probably good until they get it rebuilt or you have to have new tires or the new front end alignment. It's really pitted.
This is what we were waiting for.
Exactly.
Now that we have this, we will start on this project, so.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Maddie Maynard with Tourism and Events. And I have here the Dragway Rental Agreement for this year, same as the Speedway before. The actual agreement and the language in it has been approved in a previous meeting. We just now have the information and signatures from the enters and need a signature from Commissioner Larson and the clerk auditor.
Is there a reason we had to bring it back?
We were gonna ask Lauren if we have to actually bring it through a commission meeting just to get the signature.
If we already approved it and approved it for signatures...
Then unless it changes, wouldn't we be okay to move forward with that?
Okay.
But I do have one question on it.
Yes.
If you look on October something, can we clarify that to read what it should read?
Yes, October 10th and 11th.
Okay.
We'll make sure you can tell what that says.
I really thought it was October 31st, but, okay, yeah, if we could do that, that would be great. Other than that, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 Diamond Mountain Dragway Rental Agreement as presented.
Any comments, questions? Call for a vote?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, Maddie. Okay, Caleb?
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm here to present, Mike's, if you can excuse Mike, he's gonna be back on Thursday, but I'm here to present the budget increase. So Resolution 325, 2025 R1. Let me just get my computer up here. All right, I don't know if everybody can see that okay. Let me get a little closer. All right. All right, so right here, so for general fund, can everybody see that okay? Let me get a little closer, sorry. All right, so we're gonna start right here. So, so grants, the expenses, as a total, we're increasing 15,396 and $100. And then the offsetting, so in government accounting, we have to balance that with the revenues. So the NRCS Ashley Watershed, so 14,589, well, sorry, I'll go through this. My apologies. So the expense for the airport, 17,000. That's a pass-through grant that just comes through us and we give it to Vernal City. And so the NRCS Ashley Watershed, that's the 14,589,100. That's a federal grant that's gonna pass through for the canal. And then revitalization funds, 632,000. I believe that's for the Lucky Acres Phase Two. And then we got the rural county grant at 175,000. And I believe this was for the airport utilities. Is that correct, for a hangar? And the TSA rent, again, that just goes with the expense there and recognizing that money coming in. So then Fund 11 and Municipal Service Fund, as Matt had mentioned, community development, the 10,000 expense there, Sheriff Department, we've got 13,500. And then liquor law enforcement worth beer tax, 67,900. The offsetting revenues, the Water Element Grant for community development, early intervention grant goes with the sheriff. And this is a, for the beer tax, it's a carryover. So they use it carryover funds so they can spend it. And then we've got Fund 55, Western Park. So Capital Projects, the expense is 589,600. And Western Heritage Museum, 1700. And then that offsets with a grant of 1700. That's what Lana presented today. And the use of fund balance for the capital projects, 589,600. And I know we had spoke, 340 of that is actually for purchase of land. And so I didn't know if you had more details on that. So we might need to...
40,000?
340. So 256, let me go back. So that is 249,600 is carryover from the committed funds for the ice rink, the remodel for the Western Park, amphitheater, parking lot. So that's just what's to be spent. We've got commitments there and, but yeah, apologize, I don't have more information on the land, though. So maybe if we need to reach to Melanie, so, all right. And that's what I've got presented, or as is presented for the Resolution 325, 2025 R1.
Okay, now is the time for public comment. If you have something you'd like to question, ask us about, now is the time to do it. And I'll call for a motion to help public comment?
No, you just opened.
Oh, I just opened it, it's open.
Public hearing.
It's for a public hearing. Okay, any questions, comments, statements?
So instead of rural county grant, it's rural communities? Opportunities grant, so we can get that fixed, though.
And that's on the upper part?
That's the upper part there, so, for the 175. All right. Okay, all right, any other questions?
Now's your chance. If you have any questions, please come forth, state your name, and ask your question, and we'll try to get the right answer to you. Going once, going twice. You're out of luck. Not seeing anybody come forth, we will close the public hearing on Resolution 0325, 2025 R1.
Chair, if I might, I had a couple of comments. One was the county rural communities grant is, I believe that's the one for the utilities to be ran to the hangers so that we can, then there can be hangers built and leased out to increase the revenue for the airport, is what that amount is, that 175,000.
All right, okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
I, I would just add in there that we've gone over this several times, two or three times today and had Caleb down and visited and, and it is what it is. And, and we're moving, moving forward and doing some really nice things. I do wish that there was a different way than to pass 14 million dollars through the county for a canal project, but that's the way the system works. And so it, in order to be that, that work and meet the qualifications, that's simply what we have to do, so.
I'm sorry, I did have one more thing. That brought up the point I was going to bring out about, when it says budget increase, I wish we didn't have to publicize it that way because most people think we're spending more money. But in this case, most all of this is grant money. It's just adding to the budget, so it's considered a budget increase. It's not that we're necessarily... It's not that we're necessarily spending more money and increasing the expenses. We're, in, in most of these cases, I think it's almost all being offset with money that we had already received or that we will be receiving through grants or other revenues.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Um, are we on 13 now?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, go ahead.
Me?
Whoever.
I'll, uh, make a motion to accept this budget increase, uh, in Resolution 03 dash 25 dash 2025 R1 as presented by Caleb Hall.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now's time for public comment. Anyone wanna make a public comment? Okay, hang on, I got to read the thing then. Public comment is a time for public comment, not public debate. The county will listen to the comments made and take them into consideration. The county will be responding to comments or answering questions, or may not. It just depends on what the question is, if we have some idea what you're even talking about sometimes. All right, comments made might not be something the county has the power to act on. This is a recorded public meeting. If someone would like to make a comment, please come forward when the microphone's clear and state your name and, for the record. Please be respectful, no interrupting. Please wait your turn. A total of 15 minutes will be allotted to the public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to complete their comment. So when you hear the magic buzzer, your three minutes is up. We have a crowd here, so I don't know if we can go over or not. Come forth, sir. Wherever you want to, either way.
This one's a little easier, you can set stuff down.
Okay. Uh, Matt Corbin, Vernal City. Um, I represent, uh, UNO County GOP. On behalf of the party, just wanna say thank you for having this public portion of the meeting to, uh, speak. Um, I'm here to, uh, just mention that we are having our Lincoln Day Dinner on April 3rd. Um, it's an opportunity for like-minded individuals to connect. Um, and we are, uh, recognizing, um, our veterans, those who have served our country. We're also recognizing our first responders, um, who have sacrificed so much. And so, we're just asking that anybody that might wanna come, please do so. We would love to have you. Um, you can get online at UNOGOP.org backslash LDD for Lincoln Day Dinner and buy your tickets online. Um, and again, we just, uh, we thank you, you guys for your service. And we thank, um, all our public servants for their service, our first responders and our veterans. And so, again, just wanted to say thank you and hope to see you there.
Thanks.
That's it, you still got two minutes. Thank you very much. Anyone else wanna speak?
Me. I'll just say to Matt and the Republican Committee, they've really been engaged, doing great things. I've been attending their meetings, and I do appreciate their efforts. And not only, um, Lincoln Day Dinner, but I think going forward, um, to April 24th, is that correct, Matt? Is the-
State Convention?
Is the county convention, um, show up, throw your name in the hat, get involved, and, and, uh, that's the process to-
Have a voice.
Make changes and move forward and have a voice, so, put a plug in for that as well. I think it will be held at the Vernal City, um, Community Room.
That's the organizing convention, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And who's your guest speaker gonna be this year?
Uh, Jane Horton. Um, she's a senior policy advisor for Senator Alton DC. Um, she's a gold star, uh, wife of Afghanistan. So she, she is an advisor for, um, like, all that stuff.
And she's very good at what she does. Very good. Anything further?
Do we, oh, what, real quickly, to come to that, though, there's no registration, no anything, just come, okay.
And your ticket.
Do you have to have a ticket? Oh, so the same thing, but without the backslash LDD? Okay. Good information for the public.
Anything else?
Hopefully, they do.
I believe Mr. LaFever has a statement to make.
Well, no, we have a closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that one.
So, I would make a motion that we go into closed session for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property when public discussion of the transaction would disclose the appraisal or estimated value of the property under consideration or prevent the public body from completing the transaction on the best possible terms. Um, we will, are we going to have it in the small conference room? So we will be moving into the small, Commission Small Conference Room. Um, we'll probably give about a five, 10-minute recess. So roughly about four o'clock in the small conference room. And then when we're completed with the closed session, that we come out of closed session and adjourn.
All right. We'll be in recess.
Do we have to vote, we have to vote on that, I believe?
You wanna vote to go on closed session?
Do we have to have roll call? Roll call vote?
LaFever, aye.
Norton, aye.
Larson, aye.
Okay. Thank you.
All of these decisions you're making.